All right, welcome to November 3rd meeting of the Murph River City Council. It's six o'clock and if you'll bow with me, I have the prayer and the pledge. Father, thank you for this night. Lord, I thank you for the people who are sitting up here. Or that you give us guidance, that you give us wisdom, that you give us a compassionate heart, Lord, to help make the decisions that not only make our community better, but, Father, help, guide our leadership to help us make good decisions. Father, I ask that you be with us. We ask you that you protect our employees, Lord, be with our families. Lord, and we thank you for what you're doing for us, what you have done for us, and what you'll continue to do for us. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
My pleasure, ladies and gentlemen. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, you have 12 items on your consent agenda. Is there anything that needs to be pulled on or off the consent agenda?
If there are none, so move.
Second.
Motion in a double second. Please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shackleton?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. We'll move into new business. You have land use matters, zoning property along North Thompson Lane. Mr. Blomley.
Good evening, Mayor and members of council. Our first public hearing tonight is for the New Vision Baptist Church property located along the east side of North Thompson Lane and also with frontage along West College Street and West Northfield Boulevard. New Vision Baptist Church's campus is currently zoned RS-15. It's also in a PSO Plan-Sign-Overlay District, but that's not impacted by this zoning request. But it's zoned RS-15, which is single-family residential, minimum lot size of 15,000 square feet. Churches and other institutional uses are permitted by special use permit in the RS-15 zone. So over the years, there's been no, there really been no need to change the zoning because the church is permitted by special use permit, even though it might seem odd to have property zoned RS-15 there on North Thompson Lane in the midst of a lot of other commercial and medical development. So what that means is that every time New Vision Baptist Church wants to expand their facilities, whether that's a parking lot expansion, whether those are athletic fields, whether those are building additions, every time that they want to do an expansion, they have to apply to the Board of Zoning Appeals for a special use permit because it's zoned RS-15, even though it's really not what we would consider a residential area where that special use permit oversight would normally be warranted for a church in a residential zone. So New Vision wants to do a building addition on the south side of their property near West Northfield Boulevard. That building addition would exceed the maximum building height in the RS-15 zone. Our single-family residential zoning districts have a 35-foot maximum building height. New Vision wants to build an addition that would be two stories, but it would have a little bit of a third story on it as well as kind of a covered open air area on the rooftop area. So all in all, the structure would be about 45 feet tall, which exceeds the maximum building height of 35 feet in the RS-15 zone. So rather than New Vision applying for a height variance, because really, you know, when the Board of Zoning Appeals is looking at whether or not to approve a height variance, it's hard to meet the criteria that our zoning ordinance has for a variance when you're talking about a height variance. So rather than apply for an uncertain height variance and also to eliminate the need to keep on applying over and over again to the Board of Zoning Appeals for special use permits every time they wish to do an expansion, staff worked on what would be an appropriate zoning district in order to enable the church to build their addition and to not require them to go back to the BZA every time they want to do an expansion. So we came up with, or we recommended to the church that they apply for CM zoning. So that's Commercial Medical Zoning. It's very limited in what it permits, mostly medical offices and other medical-related uses. Does not allow all of the commercial uses that you would see further to the south along Thompson Lane in the areas that are zoned industrial and commercial. So, but the CM zoning district does allow a maximum building height of 60 feet, which would accommodate their proposed 45-foot-tall building expansion. So the applicants, the church, applied for CM zoning at staff's recommendation and the Planning Commission conducted a public hearing on this matter on September the 7th and then voted to recommend the rezoning to CM that evening. The council will need to conduct a public hearing on this matter tonight, after which the vote will be on first reading. I'll be happy to answer any questions before or after the public hearing and looking to see if a representative of the church is present. Yes, Mr. Freeman from the church is present if you have any questions for him.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Blomley?
Is the highlighted in blue, are those the permitted uses?
Let's see, let me get to the... So, the, yes, what is highlighted in blue is what is permitted in the CM zone in the chart in your agenda materials. The S would be uses that would require a special use permit from the Board of Zoning Appeals, and the X would indicate uses that would be permitted by right.
Okay.
We're going to need to hold a public hearing on this rezoning request. If you want to speak, if you'll come to the podium, you'll have three minutes. If you're representing as an individual, five minutes as a group. If you'll keep all of your comments directed toward the council, we'll get those answered at the end of the public hearing. Please state your name and address when you do come to the podium. Anyone wishing to speak for or against, please come on up.
I'm Jim Lewis, the Chief Ranger at Stone River National Battlefield. That's at 3501 Old Nashville Highway. Y'all should come down to visit us sometime. And I can't say that I'm actually speaking against this particular proposal. In fact, we've had the chance to look at it. What is being proposed to be built on the property right now is not something that is a concern to the park as it's not going that much higher. I would like, though, considering that the National Park Service is an agency that has to take the long view, not just what's happening this year or next year, but what's going to happen 50, 100 years down the line. And knowing what we've been grappling with in that Thompson Lane corridor with a continuing degradation of the viewscape, particularly of folks within the battlefield looking outwards from places like the slaughter pen where so much devastation took place 160 years ago, that a blanket overlay of this property allowing up to 60 feet of development opens the door for a greater degradation of that viewscape from within the battlefield in the far-too-distant future. I know, having had conversations with our neighbors at the church, you know, that there's no real plans for anything like that to go on now, but I would like to voice our concerns that, you know, raising the height in places that are so easily visible to visitors from within the park and given our challenges in a vibrant, growing community like this one, you know, with, you know, having to find space for, and buildings for, you know, all the things that are making us such a great community, we do want to, you know, folks to pause for a moment and perhaps think about what that's going to do for folks that are visiting and trying to imagine what had happened at the Battle of Stones River and how much harder and harder that gets as ever larger and taller buildings begin to surround us. So I thank the council for their time.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Lewis. Anyone else wishing to speak? All right, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. We'll now consider on first reading ordinance 22 Oz 39.
When we do, Matthew, you might answer this question. If we do a blanket zoning and it permits 60 feet, is there any way to limit that restriction to, or do you, basically, when you give it a CM, you're basically granting 60 feet of development?
Yeah. Mr. Shackleton, if it's rezoned, then 60 feet would be the maximum building height for the church. I mean, I don't think that we could restrict it any further than that because it would be the, it would be the regulations within that zoning district. Although ornamental towers, even in the RS-15 zone, are allowed to, up to a height of 70 feet, whether it's in the RS-15 or the CM zone. But what they're proposing in this, and I'll show you the building.
45 feet, is it?
45 feet. See, it's not a full third story. They've got kind of a covered rooftop patio, as I mentioned, and there's a stairwell, but it's, you know, it's larger than a, you know, there's a little bit of a third story and it was just too much to consider an ornamental tower to allow it without either a variance or rezoning the property. It was more functional than ornamental.
If no further questions, I move on approval.
Second.
Motion, second.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shackleton?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. All right, we'll move into item 14, zoning for property along Burnt Knob Road. Mr. Blomley.
Thank you, Mayor McFarland. This is the property that about five years ago, you rezoned to Park in anticipation of a park facility on this, on this property. As you know, things have changed since then and we are in negotiations to transfer this property to Middle Tennessee Electric and for the city to acquire Middle Tennessee Electric's property on Veterans Parkway, which is the subject of the next public hearing. As a part of that, as a part of that contract to transfer properties, these two rezoning requests are before you tonight. So the property, I believe, was in 2017 or 2018, was rezoned to Park, and the request tonight is to rezone it from Park to Commercial Highway with the GDO-1 overlay district. The property is about 117 acres and it is located along the south side of Burnt Knob Road, just north of I-840. The city believes that Middle Tennessee Electric, given the way that this property is positioned near the interchange, near one of our most vibrant, developing corridors in the city, we're seeing growth along the Veterans Parkway, I-840 interchange on a regular basis. So the opportunity for this property to develop as an economic development engine was the catalyst for that, for that property transfer. And so the request to rezone to CH and GDO-1 will put the zoning in place to entitle that property for numerous uses that will enable that economic development growth on that property. With the Park zoning, if someone were to attempt to develop a commercial or an office use on that property, they'd have to go through the rezoning process, which is a four-to-five month process. And in this case, having that zoning intact will enable a user to move forward with development plans on that property four to five months quicker than if it were not entitled. The surrounding area at this interchange is primarily zoned Commercial Highway. You'll notice the property along Veterans Parkway north of I-840 is zoned Commercial Highway. The Togri property and the Swanson property were also both included in the GDO-1 property a couple of years ago. And then there's the property at the corner of Burnt Knob and Veterans, which is already zoned Commercial Highway as well. The GDO-1 zoning is consistent with past zoning actions in this interchange, on this interchange, as I mentioned, the Togri and the Swanson property. But also, just earlier this fall, the council approved the rezoning of the Vanderbilt property south of the interchange, the GDO-1. And what we're really trying to achieve is a high-quality look and design and feel for that area, similar to what we've achieved along Medical Center Parkway. And so we're trying to, with the GDO-1, set up the quality that we desire at that interchange. Also, the GDO-1 does restrict some uses that are permitted in the Commercial Highway zone, eliminating some uses that might otherwise be seen as undesirable in the Commercial Highway zone. With that being said, the Planning Commission conducted a public hearing on this matter on September the 7th and voted to recommend its approval to the city council. I'll be happy to answer any questions on this request either before or after the public hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Blomley. All right, anyone wishing to speak, or will need to up in the public hearing, anyone wishing to speak for or against the zoning of this 116.7 acres, please come to the podium. All right, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. We'll consider on first reading ordinance 22 Oz 40.
So move.
Second.
Motion, second. Ms. Brown, please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shackleton?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. All right, we'll move to item 15. This is the zoning property along Veterans Parkway.
Thank you, Mayor. Our final public hearing tonight is for the current Middle Tennessee Electric property. Back in 2014, it was zoned PCD to allow for the development of Middle Tennessee Electric's corporate headquarters, which included an office building as well as some indoor storage facilities and some outdoor storage yards. It also included kind of a lush park-like setting as well for their employees, but that was eight years ago. Development never moved forward. And as I mentioned, the city and Middle Tennessee Electric are, have the swap of these properties under contract, and so that is the reason for the rezoning of this property because the existing PCD zoning on this property will not allow the city to develop it with the facilities that are desired or needed in this area. To give you an idea of the location of the property, it's on the east side of Veterans Parkway, just to the south of the intersection of Blackman Road and Veterans Parkway. It's bordered by residential subdivisions on the north and south sides. Berkshire is to the north and the Cloister is to the south. To the east of the subject property is our single-family residential subdivisions in both the unincorporated county and the city along Brinkley Road. The request is to zone the frontage of the property to Commercial Highway and GDO-1. The CH and GDO-1 zones would allow the development of public services, community facilities, as well as neighborhood services to serve the general area. Whether these would be facilities or services that would be developed by the city or by others is unknown at this time, but that property would be, the zoning would be in place for those facilities and those services to be constructed and developed on that property that's in the red on the map before you. The area in blue was sized, the way it has been sized, to house a potential school facility. And the commercial fringe zoning was chosen, much the same way as it was chosen for Salem Elementary, because commercial fringe does not require a special use permit from the Board of Zoning Appeals. Thus, every time that the, before initial construction as well as before any additions, that special use permit would not be needed and that use would be allowed by right. The area in green is the area proposed to be zoned P-Park. It includes the buffer that's already in place along the northern property line between the subject property and the Berkshire subdivision, as well as an area that is predominantly a sinkhole close to the front of the property, but it still leaves dozens of acres, dozens of usable acres that could potentially be developed with city parks and recreation facilities. The Planning Commission conducted a public hearing on this matter on September the 7th and voted to recommend approval to the city council. I'll be happy to answer any questions before or after the public hearing.
Matthew, one quick question. When I first saw the plan, my heart dropped when I saw the portion that said PCD to CF. And then everyone explained to me that Salem, our school, there is zone commercial fringe to not have to have a special use permit. Is that the same premise with this?
Yes, sir. The commercial fringe zone would allow the school use to be permitted by right and without having to go through that extra hurdle of going to the Board of Zoning Appeals.
So we're not anticipating like a grocery store in the middle of this property when someone sees it as commercial?
No, sir. That's never been the, for that blue area, that's never been the desire that's been communicated to me. And I think one thing to remember, of course, is that this property will be owned by the city and so how it's used and whether or not any of it's transferred to any private entities will be up to the city council.
All right. Any other questions? All right, seeing none, we'll need to open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak for or against, please come to the podium. All right, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and we'll consider on first reading ordinance 22 Oz 41.
So move.
Second.
Motion, second.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shackleton?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. Thank you, Mr. Blomley. And I assume you're not going to be moving to Auburn to be the next football coach there since y'all don't have one right now?
I've got my fingers crossed for D on.
Oh, okay. All right. All right, we have a sewer allocation variance for 1345 Winland Drive. Mr. Barbie?
Yes, good afternoon, Mayor and members of the council. We've got a request for a sewer allocation variance located 1345 Winland Drive, also known as the Social Murph Apartments. The request is for an additional 5.5 single-family units per acre greater than the 9.0 units per acre allowed by the ordinance, as well as 4.4 single-family units per acre greater than permitted by the existing density. The applicant, applicants wish to bifurcate the existing 96 four-bedroom, four-bath units and convert them to one-bedroom, one-bath, and two-bedroom, two-bath units. Because the proposed bifurcation will result in additional units above what is current, above what current zoning allows, the applicant will propose to rezone the entire property to planned residential district. The ordinance allows only 9.0 single-family units per acre for multifamily developments. This property was developed and approved prior to the sewer allocation ordinance and consists of 21.98 acres in size and would be allowed 198 single-family units. The current density of the facility is equivalent to 216 single-family units, which is 9.8 dwelling units per acre, which is already in excess of what's allowed by the ordinance. The bifurcation will result in 312 total dwelling units, which equates to 14.2 single-family units of sewer capacity per acre. The ordinance, an increase of 4.4 above greater per acre, greater than what's existing on this property today. Despite the increased density, the number of bedrooms and bathrooms are each decreasing by 96. In addition to that, in addition, the applicant is committing to installing low-flow commodes and plumbing fixtures in all units, and as a result, it is anticipated that the proposed bifurcation will actually reduce the sewer consumption for this property. The staff used the advantages of reduced sanitary sewer usage and investment into an aging multifamily property as a greater benefit than the additional number of units above what is allowed by the ordinance. Staff has reviewed the application and recommends approval based on the information in the report. If you have any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Barbie?
So I'm a simpleton. How many total units is it going up or down?
It's going up to 312 total units. Let's see what the existing is. I believe we have a total existing 96 units now. I'm sorry? It's 216 units now. They're increasing by 96.
Okay.
These units, though, if you take the 216 units and you look at it as they lease, which they're leasing per bedroom right now, it's really 800 units that they have, that they're, they're going from 800 individual units down to more of a traditional apartment or garden-style apartment, which, we've talked about this before, these are typically the types of units that... the types of, of units that we've had higher crime than other, other areas, when it's the units that are rented by the room.
Any questions for Mr. Barbie?
There are none. I'll move for approval.
Second.
Motion is second. Ms. Brown, please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Nay.
Vice Mayor Shackleton?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Yes.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. All right, we have, thank you, Mr. Barbie. On motion, we have the MED Pension Plan amendment.
Good evening, Mayor and members of council. I know you've, over the last several months, we've presented several amendments to the MED Pension Plan. I believe that these will be the last two. The reason we're making these amendments, as you know, you've approved, making lumps, offering lump sum payments out of the pension plan and then terminating the plan and purchasing individual annuities for those beneficiaries under the plan. This is mostly housekeeping to make sure the plan document is completely accurate and consistent with current operations at the time of termination of the plan. The first one is a change to the average monthly compensation, and this is a change that was approved by the IRS when they approved the amendment of the, a prior amendment of the MED Pension Plan. And the second is simply to change the reference in the definition of trust agreement to the trust agreement that currently exists between Pinnacle Bank and the City of Murfreesboro. The, I believe the prior one related to an agreement from, it was either 1994 or 1995. Happy to answer any questions.
Second. Motion is second. Please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shackleton?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. We'll move to item 18, the purchase of police vehicles from Ford of Murfreesboro. Chief?
Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. For your consideration this evening, is a request to purchase three 2023 model Ford Edges from Ford of Murfreesboro. The vehicles can be purchased off a state contract for a total cost of $108,480, and this order replaces an earlier order for Chevy trucks that was canceled, so we're just having to find a different model to go with. At this time, I'd be glad to answer any questions you may have.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. Please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shackleton?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. We'll move to the acquisition of property for Cherry Lane Phase III, Sulfur Springs Road, 3895. Mr. Kerr?
Thank you, Mayor and members of the council. This is for the acquisition of 3895 Sulfur Springs Road for the construction of the Cherry Lane Phase III roadway project. This property appraised for $600,000. Consistent with federal guidelines, the owner of the property have submitted requests for an administrative settlement in the amount of $660,000, which is a 10% increase over the appraisal. Staff believes that this is a reasonable settlement to avoid the time, expense, and risk of condemnation litigation. This expenditure, the 660,000, is funded by FY19 CIP, with $528,000 being funded from federal dollars. Staff recommends authorizing the acquisition of the property and authorize the city manager to sign documents for completion of the real estate purchase. And I'm available along with David Ives, standing for any questions you may have. I brought the big guy.
No questions. I move for approval.
Second.
Motion is second. Please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shackleton?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shackleton?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. Thank you, Mr. Kerr. All right, we'll move to the purchase of supervisory control and data acquisition, SCADA servers, water resources.
Mayor, city council, thanks for the opportunity to come for you tonight. Always like to bring pictures. The Water Resource Recovery Facility, formerly known as our wastewater plant, has a five-year scheduled improvements for standby power. You can see, year one, we have $1,008,000 that basically involves switching out, or replacing our switchgear and putting in a 450 KW generator. The task order that Smith, Segman, Reed is for the design for just year one in the amount of $115,000. They will bid this work out, again, with the budget of around a million. Some available for questions, but we would request your approval.
Second.
Motion is second. Please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shackleton?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. All right, we'll move to item 22, full-scale biosolage thermal dryer engineer design task order.
Did I just do the wrong? I think I just did the wrong, did I do the wrong?
You did 20. What about 21?
I'm sorry. No. I skipped item 20. You did, you did item 20.
And I just, I realized I went to standby power, so I'm sorry.
That's okay. Yeah, so you, you did item 20, you just did item 20, and I skipped 20. So, we, I want for the record, we just voted on item 20. We now are going to do 21, the purchase of supervisory control and data acquisition.
Sorry about that. Sometimes you get like a rat in a maze, right? I just can't get off script. Okay, thank you. So, now for the supervisory control and data acquisition purchase, you can see here, this is just how we have our pumps, our valves, our motors out in the plants with the programmable logic controllers, remote terminal units. Those go through a, a server, and that puts all that information into our end users or our operators. So, we, we bid, or we got quotes and bid for the server replacement for both plants at $187,787. We actually budgeted $370,000, but, so we came in much under budget, although we do have an installation costs that are yet to be determined, so we will be coming back with, to you when we understand what those installation costs are. But for tonight, we're asking for the purchase of these SCADA servers at $187,787.
Again, so moved.
Second.
Motion is second.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shackleton?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. All right, we'll now move to item 22, full-scale biosolage thermal dryer engineering design order, task order.
Thank you. Just to remind the council and, and I guess inform the new council members, we had a study done back in October of last year where we did a, we looked at certain criteria for biosolage drying with dryer redundancy, footprint, product quality, and so forth. We looked at five different manufacturers, and we came to the determination that Comline Sanderson was the most qualified and met the most, the criteria that we needed to move forward. Biosolages are obviously the, what comes out of the wherth, they're the solids that we've been dumping at Middle Point Landfill. We are now at the point where we believe Middle Point Landfill will close, and you can dry biosolages into a beneficially reusable soil amendment. Back in October of last year, we were not sure if the Middle Point Landfill would close. So, we suspended the project, and we said we were going to take a year off to figure out more whether the landfill would, would, if that expansion seemed more potentially going to happen or was not. Now that we believe it is not going to happen, we programmed into our schedule that we would hold this project until October of 2022. That is just a few days ago. So, we're asking SSR to go back into the full-scale design, which we're using our existing biosolage building. We can fit two of these Comline Sanderson dryers in there, so we like the fact that there's two for the redundancy element. Also, we have an external component where we're going to have a canopy where these biosolages will go into the truck. So, instead of seven or eight truck of biosolages a day that are wet, we will be only having to do one truck per, per day, which would be the dry biosolages. This is a $21 million project. We had engineering, construction, admin, and permitting estimated at about 2.7 million. The current task order in front of you for the design is at 1.4 million roughly. So, we do still have some remaining monies to do the construction, admin, and permitting, but tonight, we would just request your approval to move forward with the, the design for the biosolage drying operation.
For our new council members, because Ms. Everwater was just asking, explain what makes biosolages? What solids go into making biosolages?
Yes.
For the record, I did not ask that, Mr. Cor.
This is, yes. This is what you flush down your toilet.
So, this would really say that we're going to be number one at number two?
We're going to make your number two our number one.
Have you been waiting all night to say that?
I have. All right. And state law is also, Mr. Terry, or Representative Terry has also been working on state law, which will mandate that a lot of this is going to have to be dried before it can go anywhere.
Right. You have to have a special permit to, to discharge these into a landfill, and with landfills becoming, again, farther away and more expensive to, especially for special waste, the business case is that we should dry it and use it beneficially as a soil amendment.
Second.
Oh, Bill had the first and you had the second.
Get out.
Let's call the roll.
Motion to remove the mayor.
Sorry.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shackleton?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. Any statements to be paid?
No, sir.
Any other business from staff? Mr. Chairman, we're meeting next week or the next week?
We are meeting, yes, next week, next Thursday, which is, I'm checking the dates here pretty quick. Actually, we're meeting on the 9th in workshop.
At 11:30.
At 11:30 at the airport.
Okay.
All right. And then we'll meet on the 17th, and we won't meet on the 24th.
So, we're meeting on the 17th, but not on the 24th.
Right. We'll plan on that. If we have items on the 17th, we'll meet.
Okay. All right. Any questions or any other business from staff? Any other business from city council? All right, seeing none, we'll stand adjourned.